Good evening and welcome to the March 19, 2018, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is public participation. Anyone that would like to speak can come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close public participation. And we're on to item number three, which is New Hampshire Retirement System Presentation on New Hampshire Retirement System Employer Outreach. So I welcome to the table Executive Director of the NHRS, George Lagos, and their Public Information Officer, Marty Carlon. I hope I got that right. My own chicken scratch.
George Lagos and Marty Carlon.
I take care of it.
Please sit down.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to come here and visit with you tonight. I'm George Lagos and to my right is Marty Carlon. I'm the Executive Director. Marty is our Public Information Officer. So with that as background, the first thing I just want to talk about briefly is the folder that we left you. I hope you all have it. I'm just going to mention a couple of things in the folder that I think will be particularly interesting to you. If you, down at the bottom, you see the folder contents. On the left side of the jacket, there are these documents called NYKs. They're, that's shorthand for now you know. And they're very brief, one to two-page analysis of what are somewhat complex issues, but written in plain English and intended to be sort of brief and to the point. So I hope you find them informative. There's, well, they're all, they're all interesting topics. I would mention in particular the facts relating to employer contributions. Is this on? Sure. Sorry. You're welcome. Is that better?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Will do. How's that? Thank you. I'm glad you stopped me before I was an hour into it, yeah. So in any event, on the left side, the employer contribution, I think, will be one memo that's particularly of interest to you. And then on the right, there's some other background information. And we're not going to go through the brochure itself in detail. We'll stick with the PowerPoint, but for future reference, I think those are things you may want to look at. So the first thing I just want to say by way of background is I'm a lifelong New Hampshire resident. Born and conquered New Hampshire. And I also, along the way, had, I had about 30 years in the financial services business. And along the way, I was the Chair of the Budget Committee for the Town of Bo for three years. I served for four years and was Chair of the Budget Committee for three. So I mention that, not that that's particularly impressive, but just to say that I know on the other side of the table what it's like to be putting together budgets and the impact that the retirement system costs, as well as other costs, obviously, have on budgets throughout the state. So that was one of our main motivators in doing these employer outreach sessions, was to make sure that people have a good understanding, because sometimes there is a bit of a mystery around how rates are developed and why they go up and what the status is of the retirement system. And I know when I was working there as the Chair of the Budget Committee, there was a great deal that I didn't know about the retirement system then that I've learned along the way. So I hope you'll find this informative. And please stop us at any point as we go along to ask questions. You know, if you don't do this for a living day-to-day, I would expect there'll be many questions in your mind, but please don't hesitate to ask, okay? So we'll go to the contents. So here's what we're going to cover today. An overview, assets, investment performance, unfunded liability, funding and contributions, and the Decennial Commission. I plan on spending a bit of time on the unfunded liability and employer rates. I'm speculating that that's the subject, or those are the subjects that'll be of the most interest to you. But if there's something in particular you want us to focus on, please just let us know. Okay? All right. Next slide, Marty. So just by way of background, the retirement system was formed in 1967. We just had our 50th year anniversary. And we provide retirement, disability, death benefits, and a medical subsidy. So the main point here is it's not just a pension that our members get. There are other collateral benefits associated with the defined benefit plan as well. Next slide. By way of background, this is important, the first two bullets in particular. The legislature is the plan sponsor. And what that means is the legislature designs the plan, is responsible for making policy decisions about what benefits are going to be afforded, how the plan is structured, and basically making the rules. The retirement system is the administrator, which means that we run the system in accordance with the rules. We can adopt administrative rules to implement statutes, of course. 100A is the statute. And we can adopt administrative rules, but those administrative rules have to flow from the authority granted in the statute. So just by way of example, you know, one question we get very often from retirees is, you know, where's my COLA? Why haven't we had a COLA for years and years and years? And, you know, of course, that's a very valid question, but the reality is we don't have any authority to adopt a COLA. The legislature has to do it. And that's just an example of the difference between the plan sponsor and the administrator. Constitutional Section 36A is important because it protects the funds in the retirement system for the exclusive use of the benefits for the members and the beneficiaries. So in other words, there's a wall and a moat around the money that's in the system for the use of the retirement system. And as you know, sometimes in government, people look for pots of money. And we have a big pot of money there, and it's very important that it's reserved for the use only of the system itself. We're subject to the Internal Revenue Code in addition to 100A. And our trustees and our investment committee members are all fiduciaries. So we're a contributory, multi-employer, defined benefit plan. Once a member achieves eligibility, they get a pension benefit for the remainder of their life. And also, they can designate a spouse to get some part of their pension if they so desire. The pension is funded by employer contributions, member contributions, and the investment income we earn on the money that we put to work. And as you probably know, the employee share of the contribution is set by statute. It's fixed. The employer contribution moves around. If the unfunded liability changes, it increases, and the rates need to go up, then that's when you see your rates increase, okay? And the investment income, as you know, that goes with the market and our performance as compared to the market. And we'll talk some more about that shortly. Typically, the investment income generated on the fund is the majority contributor to the pension system itself. So let's see. Just some quick background. Profile, we have two groups, Group One and Group Two. Employees and teachers are in Group One. Group Two is police and fire. And we have 470 participating employers, which consists of schools, SAUs, municipalities, the State of New Hampshire, and other political subdivisions. I'm kind of running through this quickly because I consider all this background. I don't know how much of this is new to you so far. And these are just some numbers, an overview in terms of seeing how teachers compare to the other groups, member groups. You can see we have 17,617 teachers at the end of the last fiscal year, as compared to the employees, which are 24,000-plus. And police and fire, of course, are much smaller populations. Then below the active, you see the numbers of retirees and people collecting benefits and the dispersion among the groups there. Another overview slide, again, just to show you some comparisons with teachers. You can see the metrics of all members versus the teacher members in terms of age, average service and salary, not a huge differential. And then the average age of retirees and such, and the average benefits. The good news for teachers is that they tend to be living longer than most of our, the rest of our members. That's the good news. The bad news is that it also increases the unfunded liability. So it's a plus and minus. Good for the teachers, but a cost to the system. So in 2017, $706 million in pension benefits were paid and another $50 million in the medical subsidy. I don't intend to spend a lot of time on the medical subsidy because I think the pension system is certainly the main cost driver. But the medical subsidy, just to speak to it briefly, is a fixed-dollar medical benefit subsidy. It's not a benefit itself. It's a subsidy. It's a fixed-dollar subsidy that certain eligible people can get in retirement. It's basically a closed group, except for firefighters. There are some group of firefighters that will still come through the system and retire and be entitled to the medical subsidy. But for everybody else, pretty much, if you're not already getting it, you're probably not going to get it. Okay? So over time, the medical subsidy will work its way out of the system, but that's going to be, you know, when the last person leaves the system, which is going to be quite a while from now. This is as of June 30. Trust fund was $8.29 billion at the end of the last fiscal year. And in fact, just recently, it just went over $9 billion, although I think I have to say probably briefly. The end of January, you know, the market peaked around the end of January. In February, it sort of started going sideways. And then depending on what the tweet was this morning, the market goes in a different direction. So things are a little bit up and down right now, but you get the message that we're in the vicinity of $9 billion right now, probably a little less since the end of January, which is the last, the last numbers we have. Investment performance. Importantly, the, we have an entity called the Independent Investment Committee, which operates outside of the purview of the Board of Trustees, except with a couple, except with regard to a couple of issues. It has five members. They all have significant investment experience. And since that was formed in 2009, Marty, yeah, 2009, it's done a very good job outperforming our peers. And our peers, there's a fixed group, we call it a universe of peer pension systems, have similar assets invested, although the range is somewhat broad. We compare ourselves to what the market's doing, to our benchmarks, and also to our assumed rate of return, which is 7.25%. And then also to our peers, because if our peers who are investing in the same markets with the same sort of objectives are doing better or worse than us, that's something we want to know. We want to make sure that if there's a secret sauce they have that we don't, we want to be aware of it. Or if there's something that we're doing that's putting us ahead of them, then we know we're on the right track. And our numbers, you can see, we've done better than the majority of our pension peers since the investment committee was formed. Before that, when the Board of Trustees did the investments and was constituted differently, without the same standard in place, the performance underachieved the peer median. So the difference is literally hundreds of millions of dollars to the benefit of the retirement system since they went to the formation of the investment committee. Just some historical returns. The message we always give people here that's important is that this is a movie and not a snapshot. I mean, we always take snapshots at the end of the fiscal year, and that's what these are, fiscal year snapshots. And they're important, but what's important is how we do over the long time, because pensions are for a long period of time, a lifetime. And the investment return assumption we have is 7.25%. So in one year, if we, if we do, as we did last year, 13.5, that's certainly a very good thing, particularly in terms of short-term rates. But overall, in the long term, what's important is how do we do compared to 7.25% over time? And there's an exhibit, you'll see an exhibit in here shortly, shows you how the market jumps around. As you know, the market does not move along in a nice even trough. If it averages seven and a quarter, it, you know, is because it was 13 and a half and then it was two. So I'm not sure if that's mathematically correct, but you know what I'm saying. And there's the historical, and that tells you what it's looked like since 1998. And in particular, 2008 and '09, 2009, the Great Recession, that was a very painful experience. 18% of the trust fund was lost that year. And fortunately, since then, we've had pretty good returns. So it's more than come back since then, but that was very impactful. And then back in 2001 and '02, the dot-com bubble, you can see as below the line. So those are the two significant adverse financial effects over the past 20 years. So the unfunded liability. What's the unfunded liability? That is basically the amount of money that's owed for benefits that are already earned. That's the simplest description for it, okay? So it's a debt that has to be repaid. And there are a couple of different issues that resulted in the unfunded liability. The first, and I don't want to dwell on it too long, but back in the '90s, they used a mechanism for measuring performance of the pension system, an actuarial methodology that really wasn't widely accepted. And basically, this plain English description is, we weren't keeping score properly. So my simple analogy is, you know, we went into halftime thinking we were up 14 to 7 and came out the third quarter and found out we were down 21 to 7. We thought we were doing pretty well, and we weren't doing nearly as well as we thought. So that created an unfunded liability over a significant period of time. That has been rectified, which is very important, but that was the first cost driver. The second is, as you just saw, the dot-com bubble. And then again, the Great Recession. Those two events dramatically impacted investment returns, which is a negative. And then the third thing is changes in actuarial assumptions. I'll go into the detail in a minute, but every five years, we review all of our actuarial assumptions. And actuarial assumptions, by way of example, the assumed rate of return, how much we're going to make on our investments. What's called the payroll growth factor. Is payroll going to grow at the rate that's expected or not? And that's a particular issue for teachers that I'll talk about shortly, okay? And also longevity. What's the expected life expectancy and how's the actual life expectancy compared to it? And that's also been an issue for us, and again, with teachers as well, because teachers are outliving the life expectancies that are actuarially determined, which is good for the teachers, but it means that the liabilities that were set aside aren't enough to meet the requirement. So that has impacts as well. So these, every five years, we do these revisions to the assumptions. And the last two time we have done it, it's resulted in an increase in the unfunded liability. And why that's important is the unfunded liability has a direct impact on rates. And we'll talk about that in a minute as well. So the first thing I want to address on this slide is the importance, conceptually, of the difference between where you are and where you're going, okay? Sometimes people express the view that the retirement system is going out of business, it's going to be defunct, it's going to go bankrupt, it's going to run out of money. And even though we have a substantial unfunded liability, what's really important is where you're going. Do you have the mechanisms in place to address the unfunded liability? So the example would be states like New Jersey, Connecticut, maybe Illinois. Those are states that have significant unfunded liabilities, perhaps worse than our own. But they don't have a statutory or constitutional structure that assures that they're going to pay into the system what needs to be paid in to make the fund whole again, okay? In New Hampshire, the Constitution requires us to set rates that are actuarially determined. If the actuaries compute that we need to set a rate at X, then the board has to set that rate at X, unless they can find or uncover a reason why that's not correct, in which case the actuaries go back and give us a different number. But we don't have the ability legally. If the actuaries were to say the rate ought to be X, the Board of Trustees can't arbitrarily set the number at 15% below X, just because it might be expedient or because it would be politically expedient to the employers to do that. They have to set the rate as to what's required, and the employers have to pay the required rate. Some states don't have that requirement. So what happens is, they continuously, they're unfunded, and they continue to pay lessons required to fund the plan. So basically, when you have a hole, you can keep digging, you can stop digging, or you can fill it in. And those states are still digging the hole. That's, that's a desperate place to be, because nobody, it's very difficult to generate the political will and the money required to recover when you keep going in the wrong direction and you're in substantially unfunded position. So in New Hampshire, between the statute and the Constitution, we have a mechanism in place that assures that we're going to bring the status of the system back to full-funded status. And right now, that's because there's an amortization schedule that says by 2039, the existing unfunded liabilities have to be paid off. So it's basically like a 30-year mortgage. It's not exactly like a 30-year mortgage, but basically similar enough for analogy purposes to say that by 2039, if all assumptions are met, that the system will have paid off the unfunded liability through the contributions that come in over time, okay? The little asterisk I'm going to leave for something that's being considered at the state legislature, which has to do with future liabilities, I'll leave that for Marty to talk about at the end, when he talks about the Decennial Commission. I'll leave the tough stuff for Marty. I'll do the easy stuff. So the unfunded liability doesn't affect the short-term status, financial status of the system. It's a, it's a liability. It's significant, but it's being paid down. Let me just take a breath there. Anybody, any questions where I am right now? No? Okay.
Could I ask one question?
Sorry. Look, don't look to my right. Matt.
Oh, okay. You had, this isn't to put you on the spot, you guys are doing a great, great work right now, getting this system back where it was. And you said the actuarial rates will be the, determined by the actuarial team, will be the rates that they pay. I know years ago, I've been in the New Hampshire retirement since 1990, and I remember back looking historically, in '84, the employer contribution was 0.88%. It stayed that way for like a 10-year period, until we get to like 2009, then it went up to like 9%. Then it climbed dramatically from then.
Right.
Do you see in the future rates going down for the employer? I know rates went up for the employee from 5 to 7. I was to pay 5%, and we'd pay 7, which is fine. I think everybody in the system agrees with that. You know, we can give our extra 2% in there to make sure everything is solvent.
Right.
But do you think the trend is going to continue to go up? Or do you think it perhaps may dive down to a, not reasonable, but to a lower level?
So first thing I'll just mention, historically, remembering that we were keeping score improperly from '94 to what year, Marty?
'10.
2010?
'10.
Yeah. So you've got an apples and oranges situation. You had lower rates, but they weren't real. They were being subsidized by the future, you know? You were paying below market price for a dollar. And you were getting the, I say you, we, everybody, every employer that was paying in, basically, didn't, didn't do it intentionally, but they decided that they would underpay. It was, basically, we underpaid what was required over a great number of years, and that created the unfunded liability. So when you change the methodology so it's proper and you're keeping score proper, now you've got, you've got an unfunded liability you didn't have, and you've got to pay the normal cost for the pension and the mortgage on the other house that you just found out you had, right? So the answer to your question is, and this is a giant, the giant if in pension system speak, is the assumptions, the actuarial assumptions, if the actuarial assumptions are met. So the way the rates are set, that if, if the world were not dynamic and it was totally static, and the investment rate of return came in at exactly seven and a quarter, and the payroll growth factor was exactly as anticipated, and inflation rate was picked out exactly right, and all these things just stayed static until 2039, your rates would be pretty much exactly as they are now.
Okay.
Okay? That if is a huge if, because it's, they're not actuarial facts, they're actuarial assumptions. So you're going to move around. So if we do better than the market, and we do better than the assumptions, they're going to come down a little bit. And if we don't do as well, they're going to go up. There are some other implications, but I think that's generally the answer. Now, what happens in 2039 is dramatic, and I'll save it for the employer rate chart. But what happens then is, you've paid off the mortgage. So once you've paid off the mortgage, the cost of the system goes down to only paying for future benefits that are earned as people are earning them. And the difference is just dramatic. I mean, 80% of what is being paid by employers now is going to pay the unfunded liability. So in 2039, 2040, let's say, what should be happening is you'll be paying the 20% only and not the other 80.
Thank you very much for explaining that to me in a very, very concise and candid manner. I appreciate that.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, I thrive on pointed questions, so ask all you have.
Well, no, that was just a specific, because I've always looked at that. And I recall those days when it was, we're paying hardly, the employer was paying hardly anything, and it was, why aren't you putting more money into the system when the market's climbing?
Well, that's the other thing, is, you know, human nature being what it is, when you're making double-digit returns for, you know, extended periods of time, money's falling from the sky, you can increase the benefits, you know, you don't have to pinch your pennies, and then it stops. And, you know, when markets, markets don't defy gravity forever, you know? You might get back-to-back, but it's not going to go forever.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
Well, Matt was the first to the party that joined the dance floor, but I think there are a couple of the questions that came up. So do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just have a question. Are there other factors, like legislation, that might impact kind of the trending of that? Like I recall hearing recently that there was legislation maybe about, for lack of a better word, a double-dipping or so on and so forth. If you could tell me a little bit about that and maybe where that legislation stands?
Right. So, yeah, legislation could always change what I've just said, because that's a dynamic, right? And so, you know, anything that, any legislative act that increases the liability will increase the cost of the system. And two examples, well, one example would be a cost of living adjustment. If it was decided there's going to be a cost of living adjustment, that money's going to come from somewhere. Unless it comes from the general fund, it comes from the system, and so that would generate a rate increase, okay? Back in 2010 and '11, you know, we had HB2, and that made a lot of changes to the system. On the positive side from the, in terms of the health of the system, it increased the employee contribution rate, so more money came in. That was a positive. Also, it adjusted some benefits and eligibility. So that was a big savings as well. I think it was a couple billion dollars that we saved. When I say we, the system benefited by a couple billion dollars because of the changes that were made. But if the legislature decides to grant benefits or increase the liability in some way, then there'll be a cost. And if they reduce benefits or make it, stretch out eligibility in some way, or, you know, further confine how the benefits will be paid, then that could result in a savings. And anytime the liability goes down, that benefits rates, and when the liability's increased, it could have impact rates the other way. Yeah, last thing I want to say, and I don't want to be political when I say this, but we've been, we're very interested in working after retirement, because it's a very difficult issue with a lot of different sides to it. And it really is one of those matters, depends on which seat you're sitting in, in terms of what makes sense. But actuarially, it's not a huge impact on the system, okay? It really isn't, because it's true that academically, if you take one member out of the system, now there are that many less people to calculate your rates on, so that the rates did change by something about eight places to the right of the decimal point. So if 10 people now are double-dipping, they've come back to jobs, working part-time that were formerly full-time jobs, we don't like that notion from the retirement system standpoint, because it takes people out of the system. We don't think that's a good thing. But actuarially, 10 people against a population base of 48,000 active members, you know, again, the financial impact of that isn't dramatic, okay? So it's much more having to do with the public policy aspects of who's retired, who's not retired. Should they, should they, is working 32 hours really working part-time? Should they be able to? Shouldn't they? You know, all those questions are still boiling, and there's legislation up there right now that's taken a couple of twists and turns, and I don't know how the movie's going to end. Please.
Just in terms of how legislative policy can impact costs, it's not in the slides, and I don't know if we would have thought to mention it, but starting when the plan was created, I mean, there was a teacher system before NHRS was consolidated in '67. But back then, the state paid 40% of teacher retirement costs for the localities up through 1977, and they changed it to 35%, and that was paid through 2010. And then it went away after 2011. So that's, that's like a 50% increase in what the taxpayers are paying, you know, 35% of 65. So that was a huge policy decision that really pushed a lot of costs down to, you know, and it makes, you know, the local voters even more sensitive, because they're picking up the full tab now. And that, there's been some attempts last year in the legislature to restore some level of a subsidy for teacher, police, and fire costs. I think it was 15% was the proposal, which would have cost statewide about 40 million a year. That failed in the House. There was an attempt to bring that bill back, and the attempt failed by one vote in January. So, you know, I think because the House in particular, you know, if three, every three Houses, there's a state rep in New Hampshire. So, you know, there's a lot of them, and they hear it from their local constituents and their select boards and their school boards. So I think there is, there's a sentiment in the House, whether it's ever going to be a majority or not, that gee, we should do something for the towns, things aren't as dire as they were in 2009 and '10. But that, that was a huge policy change that really you felt in your wallets.
Thanks, Marty. That was probably the most dramatic change, because it was a change, it wasn't a change in the system per se, but a change in the subsidy that you all got as employers that just went away.
And it spiked the local, the local school district tax rate in year 2011. And that was actually one of the questions I had, so you poached me on that. It's very good. Which was, what year did the state's portion get driven down to the local employer? And that was 2010. And another point you made up that was in 2010, 2011, that legislation drove the change upward for employee contribution, that it is not done at the local level. that legislation drove the change upward for employee contribution, that it is not done at the local level. So, that's also a clarifying point from a, from a board perspective. And another question that we get a lot as a board, I think, is about privatizing retirement. And, um, one of the slides you had earlier mentioned five-point-oh-four billion dollars. That's the number that would have to be made whole to even consider privatizing, correct?
Well, when you say consider privatizing, do, do you mean at the local level, for example, town A wants to?
Well, go from a traditional retirement system to more of a 401K-type function.
Well, yeah, whatever you, whatever you do, the, the unfunded liability has to be paid. And they've, they've looked for the, so, I've been involved with retirement system now for over six years, and every year they've looked at alternative pension plans. One thing, there were two issues that are very important to the consideration. One is, is that if you created an alternative plan and closed down the present plan, you create an additional liability of over a billion dollars because of the way the payout works on your investment returns. You can't be, you have to be more liquid if you're gonna be paying out money without additional revenue coming in. So, you, you increase the unfunded liability rather dramatically. That's the first thing. And the second is that an alternative pension plan doesn't do anything to, to solve the unfunded liability that exists. It, it might create a different scenario going forward, but basically you're gonna find yourselves paying for the unfunded liability and the additional benefit that you might invest in on an alternative plan. So, it's a very expensive proposition, and it doesn't address the eighty percent of the contribution rate that you pay right now on the pension system.
We just wanted that on tape, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I've said it many times, so I'm not afraid to be taped on that.
Michael, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have a question more about the rate of returns. Um, it's very interesting to me that you top, you've actually called out two thousand eleven, though I think you probably meant two thousand twelve and two thousand sixteen as the two years. But what was interesting to me is like, two thousand eleven's a fairly flat one for the stock market, whereas two thousand twelve has a seven percent increase, where you did a point nine. And then in two thousand sixteen, the stock market had a fourteen percent increase, but only did one percent.
Well, I'm sorry, where, where are you looking?
I'm looking at the.
Oh.
Twenty-year history of total fund returns?
Yeah. So, um, but your, your, in terms of stock market returns, where are you getting your stock market return numbers?
Off the Dow Jones.
Okay, off the Dow Jones. Well, the first thing is that we're fiscal year and not calendar year, okay? That makes a dramatic difference, because of what's called endpoint dependency. As you know, if you start, you know, what happens with us often is if you drop off your last month and pick up your newest month, you've got a rolling twelve-month period, that moves around endpoint dependency quite a bit. When you say, are we less than the stock market, are we less than the S and P? Quite often, we're less than the S and P, um, because the S and P, uh, moves around and so volatile. Um, you know, you wouldn't, from an investment standpoint, you, you need to have some consistency in your earnings. So, typically, you know, we have a percentage of our money in the S and P. I mean, we do thirty percent in domestic equity, twenty percent international, um, and we have fifteen percent in alternatives, ten percent in real estate, and twenty-five percent in fixed income, okay? So, all I can say to you about our investment returns is that, um, based on our risk profile, the benchmarks we use, and compared to our peer groups, our investment performance is, is excellent. And I can say that because I take no credit for it. I, I, none of the decisions are mine, okay? So, I'm not patting myself on the back. We have a, an investment committee that works very, very well. So, I, I have, um, uh, I guess what I would say is I'm, I'm very pleased with the investment performance we have. We're lucky to have an investment committee like the one we've got.
Yeah, definitely appreciate the, uh, explaining the fiscal year versus calendar year.
Yeah, it makes a big difference, it really does.
Thank you.
Yeah. And by the way, that's, for those that don't know, I mean, that's why when you buy mutual funds, you have to look very closely, 'cause they all feature double-digit returns, but they always pick, you know, starting in August to next August, if that happened to be the right twelve months. Whereas if they'd have said, starting in February to February, investment returns could be seven points less, you know, depending upon, um, what, what you drop off and what you pick up. And where that has an impact for, for you more directly is the, what's called five-year averaging. When we apply investment returns to the rates, if, if we didn't have five-year averaging, what would happen is your rates would be very similar to that investment return chart. The year we had thirteen and a half percent, you know, your rates would have gone down, because we would have exceeded seven and a quarter by a lot. And the year where we were down below zero, your investment rates would have shot up, um, because we didn't make nearly as much. What happens, though, is we take, we take five-year periods of time, and we average them. So, every, every investment return year, twenty percent goes into that calculation. So, it smoothes, it smoothes the investment returns so that the rates are smoothed as well, okay? So, getting back, um, to the biennial actuarial valuation, uh, I don't wanna rush back off of these points. Are there more questions on any of that?
Could I ask one more question on something you, you had brought up?
Sure.
For my own clarification. You'd mentioned the thirty-two-hour rule that's in effect right now.
Yeah.
If you work thirty-two hours and below, you can still collect your pension, and you don't pay into the New Hampshire retirement system.
Correct.
Is that a rule? I know there was legislation looking at doing away or lowering that threshold. Is that still out there, or is that?
It's a moving target. Uh, this was, the Decennial Commission, which Marty will talk about, took this up. They made a recommendation. The legislature took the recommendation, and, well, I won't describe what happened to it, but it didn't, didn't survive, and they, they came up with another idea, and there's pending legislation right now, and Marty follows that for us.
Yeah, the, the Working After Retirement, it's House Bill five sixty-one is the bill, if you wanna follow it. And, um, it was passed by the Senate, uh, it was amended heavily by the Senate. It's a House bill from last year, and it's, it's gone back over to the House now. And the House can either concur or agree with that legislation and let it go through, uh, non-concur, and it'll die, or request a committee of conference, and then they can hash out the original House version of the bill from last year versus the Senate bill, and see if they can reach any kind of agreement on something. If, if it does move forward from there, the governor still has to sign off on it. So, we're still probably six to eight weeks away from a decision, unless it, unless it dies before then. We won't know if it's gonna pass until probably mid to late May.
All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And it does reduce the average weekly hours, but it makes it an annual amount, so there's more flexibility, um, you know, for seasonal-type work, or, you know, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, the biennial actuarial valuation. Every two years, we set the rates, uh, the employer rates. And, and right now, um, we're about, um, the valuation, um, for fiscal seventeen, um, is being worked on right now by our actuaries. Actually, our actuary's coming to our board meeting tomorrow, um, and we're gonna be talking about, really primarily about, uh, teacher payroll growth factor, 'cause that's one of the important issues that we have to resolve before we actually do the valuation. So, what'll happen is, in October, we'll, we'll approve the actuary's valuation sometime before October, and in October, we'll vote to set the rates based on the valuation. And those rates will be for fiscal years twenty and twenty-one, okay? So, we're in that process right now. Speaking at a high level, we expect the rates to stay pretty much in the same range they're in now, not anything dramatic one way or the other, okay? And I think if I go beyond that, I'll be, um, taking a chance, because until the actuary gives us the actual valuation, um, I don't, I don't like to speculate too much. So, the assumptions we've talked about there, that we developed those in the experience study, and the valuation basically is, is, is keeping score. It, it says, okay, we, we said we were gonna generate these kinds of returns based on these assumptions, how do we actually do? And if we did better than the assumptions, again, the rates will reflect a positive change, they'll go, they'll come down. If we didn't do as well as the assumption said we would, then they'll go the other way. So, let's see, what else we need to talk about there? I think, um, I think that's probably good enough for that slide, we'll go to the next one. Did we miss, uh, the normal cost on front of?
No, that's coming up.
Okay.
No, yeah, that's coming up.
Okay, very good. So, in two thousand fifteen, um, there were three adjustments, three adjustments that were substantial. Uh, one was the updated mortality assumptions. Every, on a fairly regular basis, they update the assumptions. Are people living longer or less long than originally anticipated? And if, um, mortality improves, people are living longer, then the unfunded liability goes up, because the calculation of the pension was for somebody who was gonna live until eighty-six and a half, and if their life expectancy is now ninety-one, that's an obviously, uh, broad example. But if, if their life expectancy's increasing, then that's, more payments are gonna go to that individual, so that means the liability's gonna go up. Uh, the assumed rate of return was adjusted downward from seven and three-quarters to seven and a quarter. That's recognizing that investment returns have been very, very strong for, since the Great Recession, and at some point in time, you know, they're gonna flatten out. Um, they've, they've been pretty strong over the past fiscal year so far, but as you can see, we're getting into some gyrations now. So, the assumed rate of return was adjusted downward. Um, we do this on the advice of, um, several, uh, investment managers coming in to do presentations, and there's a very lengthy process, and the actuary has to certify that the assumption is reasonable. And that was in the range of reasonableness. We, the range at that point in time was, uh, we were looking at between seven and seven and a half, and the actuary said anywhere in that range would be reasonable, we came in at seven and a quarter. Um, and then the payroll growth factor is what I was saying before, in terms of the number of teachers or the number of employees, um, the number of members we have. If that, the, the calculation is based on an assumed somewhat static base of employees whose payroll is gonna grow over time as they remain in the job. And if those increases don't come along, or the number of teachers declines, then that means the payroll growth factor is gonna decline. So, we reduced the payroll growth factor from three-point-seven-five to three-point-two-five for all groups, except for teachers, and we put teachers at three-point-zero. And we, we, we felt that, I say we, the actuary believed that the teacher population was gonna decline by point-two-five percent a year. Um, and it's actually been declining by a rate that's in, in excess of that. And so, on that basis, we're reevaluating that assumption, okay? So, those are the three assumptions that resulted in the rate changes the last time around. Okay? So, uh, I think we've covered most of this. Member contributions are set by statute, and the employer contributions are determined every two years on a biennial rate-setting basis. Uh, the key thing I wanna mention here is, there's a different rate set for each group. Employees, teachers, police, and fire all have separate calculations for their pension systems based on their individual experience. As you know, they have different, um, work profiles, different life expectancies, different variables. Terms of the rates, there are three components, and, um, I think, uh, you've got it by now, but, um, the first is the normal cost, which is the actual cost of the pension benefit. If somebody's gonna work for thirty years, and they're gonna get a pension of X amount of dollars based on their final pay, the cost of that benefit is what? That's about twenty percent of the rate you're paying right now. The, the unfunded liability calculation, that's the majority of the rate you're paying. Eighty percent of the rate you're paying roughly is to make up for that unfunded liability. And over and above those two, uh, numbers with regard to the pension is the medical subsidy, which is a smaller number, but that's for that medical subsidy, um, benefit that we talked about a little bit earlier. And when we get to the rate slide, we'll, we'll talk about each of those, okay? Yeah, I think I just covered that one. Okay, so here's the slide that sort of gets where the, all the vernacular translates into dollars. So, let's just look at the teachers line going across the page. Under, you can see, uh, the normal cost for teachers, two-point-zero-seven percent. So, two-point-zero-seven percent of payroll is what it actually costs to pay for a teacher's pension benefit. It's, you know, it's, um, really a very modest cost for the benefit that they get. And New Hampshire, by the way, has what's considered to be a fairly modest pension benefit compared to most pension systems across the country. And then you go to the UAAL, which is the shorthand for the unfunded liability, the unfunded actuarially accrued liability, which is a mouthful, so, uh, UAAL. And you can see that thirteen-point-six-three percent of the payroll is to pay off that unfunded liability. The medical subsidy is one-point-six-six percent of payroll, and so your total rate right now for a teacher is seventeen-point-three-six percent. And half of it, when you, you know, more than half when you just look at the pension piece, but when you look at your total rate, then, um, you know, roughly, almost half of it is attributable to the unfunded liability. So, you, pay, payment of a prior debt, or an existing mortgage, if you would, okay? So, that, that illustrates, um, where we are. And it's not just the teachers, all, all, all the groups are in a similar, not identical, but similar situation in terms of their funded status. Any questions on that?
Can I just ask, was the last year of the medical subsidy two thousand eight? Because it just, I just remember that for many, that they determined that they were gonna retire because they wanted the subsidy, and then it was not gonna be offered any longer? Is that, my memory correct?
It, uh, it was teachers who were eligible to retire by July first of two thousand eight, but the legislature extended it for those people who were eligible in oh-eight. They could, they had to retire by July first of oh-nine. So, there was a sort of a large group of, of veteran educators who left in those two years. Some of them even took early retirement to preserve eligibility for the subsidy, uh, which is one of the reasons the subsidy rates ticked up a little bit in recent years, is those people aged into it. Uh, but, but there was, yeah, that was the period. That, that, that's an example of a legislative decision sort of driving individual member decisions, you know, on, on, on a level that, you know, a little bit's outside the norm in terms of retirement rates for those years.
So, I'm gonna, uh, turn it over to Marty, once you go to the, uh, next slide, Marty. I'm gonna turn it over to Marty to talk about Decennial, but the one thing I just wanna come back to, which I've, I've already spoken to a little bit, is that, um, tomorrow, we're gonna be looking at the teacher's payroll growth factor. That, I think the two decisions to, with the, what, the, the decision to be made is to leave it where it is, or possibly to move it down from three-point-oh to two-point-seven-five. That's, I think that's the framework of the conversation. But again, um, the Board of Trustees, uh, don't work for me, I work for them, so the conversation will go wherever, wherever they bring it with the actuary, but that's the range. So, even if that were to happen, the impact wouldn't be substantial in terms of the rate, but it would, would impact the rate, because if the payroll growth factor is adjusted down, the liability goes up, and that means there would be a, a rate implication. But I would say to you, I don't expect it to be a significant one, okay? Marty?
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna cover a couple of slides on the Decennial Retirement Commission. This is a statutory commission that, um, uh, meets every ten years, and two thousand seventeen was, was its turn. Um, there was, there was a prior commission in two thousand seven that made a lot of, um, recommendations that were sort of foundational in terms of governance, and sort of a lot of the issues George talked about from the nineties and the, the, the problems they had, you know, the leaks in the boat, um, if you will, over all those years. A lot, the Decennial Commission looked at a lot of that, uh, stuff, made a lot of recommendations that eventually made it into law between two thousand eight and two thousand and eleven. And, um, one of their recommendations was, we should do this again in ten years. So, they had a commission this fall that met, and a lot of, frankly, the, not, the volume of legislation on the retirement system has been pretty light the past two or three years, and a lot of it was because this commission was coming up. So, the legislature wanted to bring in, um, this group to kind of make some recommendations. They're charged with, uh, looking at the long-term viability of their retirement system. And they had a number of statutory charges of certain topics to look at. Uh, they met throughout the fall of seventeen, beginning, I think, August thirty-first, and they wrapped up in early December, and their report, um, their final report came out in early January. Uh, they, they made twelve recommendations, and, and actually, before I do say that, this commission was legislators, um, members, employer representatives, a retiree, and member, and public members appointed by the governor. So, there was a sort of a, a broader cast of characters than you would see, you know, in a legislative committee-type review of the retirement system. And they, they issued a dozen recommendations in six distinct topic areas. Funding, working after retirement, cost-of-living adjustment slash TSA, which is a one-time payment. The group one age-sixty-five pension adjustment, where the retirees see a reduction at age sixty-five in their pension. Governance issue on the, uh, the length of terms for our Board of Trustees, and then, uh, sort of a lower-level recommendation on, for the twenty-twenty-seven commission that they should start earlier. So, uh, they didn't recommend any wholesale changes to the plan. They heard testimony throughout the fall. Uh, we, we spent a lot of time in the, uh, in the hot seat going over specific topics, and we did a lot of, um, issue papers on different things. And those, actually, those are all archived online on the state website. So, if you're ever interested in, in delving into some of these topics, it's, it's all out there in the public record. But also, uh, constituent groups, uh, you know, representing employers, school boards associations, school administrators, police and fire unions, public employee unions, uh, all testified as well and, and gave some feedback. And their, their consensus among the group was, you know, what, what you started doing in two thousand seven was starting to work. Things have stabilized in sort of the, you know, the depths of the recession. And, um, you know, stay the course, and, and the commission took that to heart. So, so while they made some sort of recommendations around, around the edges, there weren't any, um, wasn't any sentiment among the majority to do anything, you know, completely switch course or anything with the retirement system. They, they spent a day talking about alternative plans. They spent a day talking about alternative plans, but couldn't get enough support for any motions on going forward with that. But, for the motions that they did talk about, some of them led to specific bills this, this current legislative session, which are listed here. Basically, the deadline for filing bills was before the commission finished, but there was a suspension of House rules to allow bills related to decennial recommendations to come in in early December. So, we saw a couple of bills out of that. One was to study what's called level-dollar amortization of the unfunded liability, and that bill also included language increasing our trustee terms from two years to three years, which I won't get into. But, level dollar is very interesting, and it's something as a, as a local employer, you know, footing the bill, you want to be aware of. Level, right now, we calculate the rates on what's called level percent of payroll. This is why the payroll growth assumption is so important in the long term. And as George said, the, you know, in the static world where all the assumptions were the same, the rates would be relatively flat through 2039. And as, you know, in today's dollars, that means you're paying about the same, you know, as your payroll grows, your number goes up. But, in terms of, you know, the, you know, the value of money over time, you're paying a fairly level amount. Level dollar is basically taking the debt and averaging it out over the period and paying, paying it all like the same installment, you know, over, more like a mortgage than the current plan. But, what that means is the employers will be paying more upfront, you know. So, your, your future school board members in 2039 will be reaping the benefits of the pain you'd feel on the tax rate now with level dollar. You know, it's from, that was a recommendation too of an outside expert that the commission brought in, the Center for Retirement Research at Boston College. It's not a, some plans already do this, so it's not a, completely an academic exercise. But, while the commission thought it might be a good idea, they were concerned about the upfront cost. So, they just requested further, the legislature studied that issue further. So, that's where that bill is at. Both of, that bill passed the House last week, and it's moving over to the Senate. The next one, House Bill 1823, that's layered amortization, and that's, when we talk about amortization, that's paying off the unfunded liability. And right now, the plan is paying it all off through 2039, then it's done. But, what happens a year later, if there's an actuarial gain or loss, that's going to be reflected in the rates going forward. You know, it's, when you get to 100%, it's not like there's a tape and you cross it. I mean, the markets could go up or down an hour later, and you're not fully funded anymore. So, you know, what layered amortization is an attempt to have a plan for after this plan is done. And what that, what the specific bill would do is, take the current unfunded liability, the $5 billion, and that still would be paid off through 2039. And that actually, you know, that was a decennial recommendation, is don't tinker with the debt we already have. But, what layering does is, it would take any future gains or losses and pay them off over a 20-year period. So, if there was in 2024, there was either a market gain or a market loss, that would be recognized over a 20-year closed period. So, it's not like it's pushing it off forever. But, one important thing about layered amortization, and our board voted to support this bill, is when you get closer to 2039, if there was some adverse economic effect, event that tanked the economy, we had another 2009 and 2037, then you're left with two years to pay off this huge debt that just jumped onto the balance sheet. So, layered amortization sort of provides a smoother path for employer rates. It's not, so it wouldn't go from here in 2039 to here. You know, if there were any liabilities or gains, you know, they would, they would go out and fall off every two years going forward. So, that, that's, that's sort of a, that doesn't have any short-term cost or anything, but it's an interesting, it's a plan for what's next. And in actuarial terms and in retirement terms, 20 years is kind of a wink of an eye. So, that, those are the two bills that were specific to commission. And then there were other commission recommendations that were similar to existing legislation that was previously fired or amended into existing bills. So, there are three bills out there. House Bill 561 is the working after retirement, the double-dipping bill that we addressed a little bit earlier. And I said that, that went through the Senate, it's over at the House right now, who will probably decide what to do with it within, you know, probably two or three weeks. The, what's called legislative crossover, when the House has to finish its bills and pass them on to the Senate and vice versa, is this Thursday. So, once that smoke clears on that, they'll start looking at these other bills. House Bill 1756 is a, it passed the House, and it's going over to the Senate. This bill would provide a $500 one-time payment next year to retirees who've been retired more than five years, and their pension is less than $30,000 a year. And currently, that's funded through the general fund, so that wouldn't increase any costs for the local employers. That's, I think, about eight to $10 million hit on that. And there's also language in there to put in a 1.5% cost of living adjustment, but, but sort of the key phrase in the bill is, subject to finding a funding source. So, without money attached to that, you know, that's, that's more of a hope than a, than a guarantee at this point. They'd have to have separate legislation or have to go through the budget process to ever grant a caller, and that's probably in the annual range of a $70 million hit. So, don't want to say what they're going to do, but that, that's less likely. And this bill was actually recommended by the House Finance Committee, that they, it would be expedited to legislate, and that recommendation was overturned on the House floor, and they passed it. Again, I think, I think the retiree group, it's been since 2010 that there was a cost of living adjustment. I think as more people retire, you know, and the years go by, they've become more vocal, and I think they've reached out to their legislators, and there's sort of a growing sentiment for that. But, we'll see where that one moves in the Senate. And the last bill, it's H. Bill 1757, and this affects your school district members in Group One, is what happens if somebody's eligible to retire between age 60 and 65, and anybody who was in the system prior to 2011 is in that boat, they would get a pension that's calculated at a formula up until they turn 65, and then the pension's recalculated to about a 10% reduction going forward for the rest of their life. And this bill attempted to push that back out to 67, which is the full Social Security retirement age for most people still working right now. And then it was amended in a sort of convoluted way, and eventually, the House tabled it last week. So, we're not sure where that's going to go. If it doesn't come off the table this week, it's probably not going anywhere this year. So, those were the sort of active bills related to the Decennial Commission's work this year. Any questions about any of those? And the last slide here that we have, just kind of education outreach, and there's resources out there for members, retirees, employers, members of the public. And our website is a good place to start for that. There's the, some of those, now you know, there's a larger set of them, they're all on our website. We do education sessions for all the different constituent groups. There's online presentations about benefits, things like that. There's one, we have online call in HRS 101, which is sort of an overview, similar to what George gave today, a little more, it's similar to what we give to the legislature every two years. So, so we're working hard, especially on the employer's side, to do more outreach, not just with governing boards, but also with sort of the folks in the, in the finance office who are using, you know, the mechanical process of submitting contributions and wage interest information every month to us and things like that. So, that's been sort of a point of emphasis. We've been working on the past year is, you know, what we're finding is some, you know, the town may be there two years, but the person who's sending us the information is there two weeks, and they really don't know how to do it. So, we want to get more training and materials out to them. And those people, the towns that are blessed with somebody who's been doing it for 30 years, we want to make sure they're up to date on current legislation and practice as well. So, that's some of the things we've been doing. So, that, I think that wraps up the slides, yeah.
Wow, that was quite a bit. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions on what was presented? I see Michael, and nothing to the left so far, but I see Michael. So, go for it.
Thank you for the presentation. This question's actually for Matt. Matt, so if I'm calculating correctly, the unfunded mandate is about 3% to 4% of our annual budget. Is that roughly correct? It's about $3 million, if I recall what we're doing on an annual basis for the retiree?
That's probably correct, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any, that was the question, it was a fishing expedition.
It was a statement that he wanted agreement on, so.
Well, I just, the reason, the reason I brought it up is because people ask about the retirement fund and why it costs so much. This is a great presentation by-
Absolutely.
-these individuals here to actually explain why 3% to 4% of our annual budget is the unfunded mandate. It's actually not even ongoing. And if you want to look at the history of how the state changed it, I would definitely ask anybody to look into it.
George came to our board meeting at the HSB in November, and I came back, and I called Marge immediately. I'm like, this, we need to talk to this guy, especially in the middle of budget season. You know, it really is so relevant to everything we do, to kind of like put it in context and in perspective of what we, you know, what we get, but also, you know, how it's, how it's managed. So, it's, this has been perfect timing, so we appreciate you coming out, too.
You're very welcome, and thanks for the opportunity. And I think, you know, the message which you're quite entitled to give is, it's an uncontrolled cost as far as you're concerned. I mean, your only opportunity really to mitigate your costs is to reduce the number of your teachers dramatically. You're assessed based on the number of your teachers. And of course, that's, you know, that's not a decision that's to be made based on the pension benefit. You want to educate the kids. But, it's, it is an uncontrolled cost, and it's, you know, it's distributed among all employers, and you have very little control over the situation. But, you're obviously the point between the spear and the retirement system. You're between the constituents and the retirement system. So, you know, tell or unless the citizens really understand that, you know, those are the questions you get. I would just finally say, now that you've met us, I hope you won't hesitate to reach out to contact us at any time if you have a question on any one of these issues. There's a lot, there's a lot of information to digest in one sitting. And, you know, the things in the folder you can look at, they might be helpful. But, if we can be of any assistance, please don't hesitate to contact us.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, George, Marty.
Thank you.
So, we're on to item number four, which is the review of parent responses to the proposed school calendar for 2018-2019. And after our last meeting on, actually, it was March 5th, that we put out the, put out the survey with a week response time, and with the survey that you all received, I have the responses, and we'll go through them one by one. And in the survey, we also had, if there were any questions or comments outside of the questions in the survey, to email me, and I have also a compilation of that. So, the first question was, do you support having no school on Columbus Day, October 8th, 2018? Of the 1,192 responses we received on this question, 643% or 54% were in favor of having no school, and 46% wanted to have school. So, the majority wanted no school on Columbus Day. Question number two was, do you support having no school on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which is October, November 21st, 2018? 72% were in favor of having no school on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving of the 1,192 responses we received on this question. Question number three was, do you support having no school on Martin Luther King Junior Day, which is January 21st, 2019? Of the 1,192 responses to this question, 57% were in favor of having no school on Martin Luther King Day. Question number four, do you support having no school on President's Day, February 18th, 2019, recognizing the following week is February vacation? So, on that, 28% were not, were in support of having, actually, of having no school on President's Day. So, 72% were not, were, did not want it. So, basically, they wanted President's Day off. Wow, why is that so hard? I have it wrong, I'm sorry. They want to go, they want to go to school on President's Day. Wow, I wrote this question. Why am I having such trouble with it? It's a double, it is a double negative thing. It gets me every time. So, we definitely want to have school on President's Day. Question number five, with teacher workshops being held prior to the first day of school, we have scheduled the first day of school to be the day after Labor Day. Are you in support of continuing the scheduling structure? Of the 1,192 responses to this question, 88% were in favor of keeping the first day of school the day after Labor Day. I'm doing better. There were no double negatives in that one. Question number six, really broke down to the number of schools, the number of students we had. There were, again, 1,192 respondents. 42% had one, 46% had two, 10% had three, and then 2% collectively had four or more. What level of school are they in? Choose all that apply. So, there were, 52% of the students were in elementary, 27% in upper elementary, 25% in middle school, and 39% in high school. Question number eight was, do you have internet access in your home? And of the 1,192 respondents, all but five had internet access in their home. Question number nine, how many devices, computers, laptops, or tablets do you have that students can use for schoolwork? And of the 1,192 respondents, 17 had zero, 197 had one, 342 had two, 286 had three, 150 had four, and then 200 had five or more. If, if school is closed, are your students taken to a childcare facility? Of the 1,192 respondents, 158 do take their child to a childcare facility, and 1,034 do not. And this is a lower number, because it's only if you responded yes. So, if yes, does the facility have resources, internet computers, that your children can use to complete schoolwork? Of the 823 respondents to this question, I'm sorry, 369 responded to this question, 823 skipped the question because obviously it didn't relate to them. Of the 369 respondents, 131 do have internet and computer access for their children at these facilities, and 238 or 64% do not. So, as we were talking about access outside of the classroom for students to get supports, I think that gives a lot of data for us to work with as well. I will go with Naomi, then Andy, I think. You kind of went in stereo, so.
I was curious, do we know how many of these surveys were taken online?
They would all, I believe, have to be taken online.
So, it's not surprising that the people who took it online are saying that they have internet access.
So, but we did have a number of respondents that were definitely responding from work, because there are a couple of corporations that firewalled it, and they were saying that wasn't, that the survey was broken when they went home at work just fine. So, we do know that a lot of people have been doing it at work as well. Andy?
But, following on that point, because the exact same thing. This was an online survey, which notification of the survey was online. Is that accurate?
We use School Messenger.
So, what, do we know how many people do not receive electronic notifications? Because to me, it's a little bit of a loaded question, because if you've got internet access, one way or the other, you're going to get one, and what you're not hitting are the people that don't.
We, I would say, before, when we came to do the survey, we looked at that, Matt, and believe it or not, the ones that have not signed up, like we looked at registration, online registration.
Yeah, it's all a function of online registration. You remember that piece we put in the budget a number of years ago? It was something that the board had wanted to do as opposed to filling out pieces of paper and whatnot. And when you do online registration, you automatically put your email in. So, when you do online registration, like a school, let's say we have one school in the district who really promoted that, and they have like, you know, 95% of the parents have done the online registration, therefore, we have our emails. I would say overall, as a district, probably looking at around 70%, that we have their emails. And over the years, that's gone up, and it's something we want to focus on in particular levels during this spring, heading into the new school year, to push that online registration so we can capture those emails.
So, my only comment is, obviously, we asked some of these questions based on our blizzard bag conversation we had earlier to find out sort of what access that we had. What we need to do if we're going to use this data as part of that, is find a way to go to the people who don't have electronic access or didn't sign up for email, and then be able to sort of go through that, you know, find out what percentage. Because I think if we're going to look at implementing something down the road, we've got to have all that data in front of us. But, this, this little piece is good, but it's, it's like going to a Patriots game and said, you like the Patriots or something, right? It's-
If they're playing the Dolphins, I'd be there for that.
Well, anyway.
Yes.
I want Matt to back me up in this. I think the school where we have less participation is the high school. And that becomes critical, because as we study blizzard bags, everything predominantly is done online at the high school level. It's done on paper at the elementary level. So, if we don't have that access at the high school, it becomes critical. I mean, for us to know that. So, we, that's why we've got to try and see if we can't get more people engaged.
Are you all set? Andy? So, Michael?
Yeah, so, I, obviously, reiterate what Naomi and Andy said. I guess for us, the assumption would have to be that, at this point, since we have, I don't know, 20% that, of individuals that haven't given us some kind of electronical, electronic form of engagement, we'd have to almost assume that that's the percentage that we have to address. So, I'm not going to say it's all 20%, but the assumption would be better to assume that versus the 100% here, based off of the survey. So, I definitely, I don't know how to solve that problem, I wish I did, but I applaud any effort to try to figure that out.
We still have a communications committee, so.
Yeah, it is, it is kind of a difficult problem, but I will, will say, years ago, when we were reconfiguring the grade levels of the schools, and made the upper elementary a five and six, and the middle school a seven and eight, we had a committee that we were working with closely, Carol Lee Dalton, Tina DeMember, I remember those names, and we did a paper survey, and we get around 1,400 respondents, and that's back then on the bus routes, and how do you want to see your kids? So, I still think, you know, even though this is around 1,200, 1,100, given the population decreased between that time and this time, this is still pretty good, a sampling, a valid sampling.
Yep. So, I think, Cindy, then Naomi?
The responses, you know, are interesting compared to, like, the first year that we had done this survey. So, we're on, what, year three or four? Is that how long we've been doing it? Yeah, are we still trending up as far as?
Number of responses? I think it was 900 last year, 600 the year before. So, absolutely, about 300 a year are increasing.
So, that's telling me that our parent community is expecting, it's becoming less of a surprise, but more of something that we continue to do. So, I would encourage us to continue to do this, not that I've heard that we're not going to, but I would just say this is good feedback, and if we can continue to increase those numbers in the participation, then that's great.
Absolutely. Naomi?
Yeah, and I don't want to belabor the point, I think that it's been made, but I, just, just two more facets of this. Having an email address doesn't necessarily mean that you have home access to internet. It's quite easy to get an email address through Google or any other setting that you can use on a phone. I, I hear, Matt, what you were saying about that it's a comparable response rate, but I'd be concerned if we're excluding the most important demographic that we wanted to capture with that question. I mean, I don't know that this is wrong, it could be right, but I don't know that it's right either. So, it'd be wonderful to keep on looking at how to do that.
Michael?
So, my question is regarding internet access at this point. I just have a question. Are we, is there any trend in regards to the response for Columbus Day and Martin Luther King, whether it's trending towards wanting to have school at this point, or is it still, it's pretty much the same?
It's been tight year over year, but it's always been the majority in, in favor of how it was presented.
And then, maybe another option, just because of the outreach from parents lately, is possibly even looking, and I think you've done this in the past, but possibly offering up instead of no school, maybe no school, school, and maybe a half-day as option before? Thanks, that's what I had as a child, so I'm just trying to throw it out there to get another...
Sure.
We went through a formal process to do, if you will, like, an early release or a half-day, with the idea that we use the other half of the day for professional development. And what we found is that parents had a lot of difficulty in finding childcare, and we really got asked, almost, to end it because it became so onerous. And we did it, too, like, we would do it on a Friday, thinking if parents wanted to have their children for a longer time or whatever. I mean, because we went through a formal application process. And basically, it was our parents that, that just convinced us to not do that.
Thank you for that information, appreciate it.
Cindy?
Yeah, I would say that one surprised me a little bit. I thought it might be a little bit closer. Like, it was pretty overwhelming, the 72% in favor of having that Wednesday before Thanksgiving off. That one surprised me as well as that starting after Labor Day. That's one thing that we hear a lot of buzz about, you know, in the summer, and about if we could start earlier, and so on and so forth. So, to see kind of an overwhelming 88% of those that took the survey wanting to start after Labor Day, I would say that surprised me as well. But I'm glad, again, I'm glad we have the disinformation.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions on the survey? Seeing none, we will go to its, the reason for the season, which is the board's response to the proposed school calendar for 2018-2019. And now that we've compiled the survey results, the survey results seem to go in concert with the administration's proposed calendar. It's our turn to just basically do the final once over, and if there are any adjustments we feel need to be made as a board, we still have the flexibility to do so. So, with that, are there any proposed changes from the board for the 2018-2019 school calendar? Andy?
First of all, it's not a proposed change.
Okay.
But what it is, is a, maybe, it's one of the things that's become apparent the last few years around the way that we delineate this calendar. The last five days of the year always have MU for makeup.
Right.
And the reason they're there is because if we have no snow days at all, we would get out in, according to this calendar, on the 14th. If you have snow days, there's a one-for-one match to add them in there. I think what we need to do is explain that those five days are, even though they're listed as makeup days, parents should assume that it could be this worst-case scenario. I mean, because what, what happens is, people say, "Oh, the last day is the 14th, I'm going to start my child at camp the following week," or whatever, hopefully, we don't have any, or if we go through there. I think what we just need to do is add some additional explanation to say that we will use these makeup days for snow days, we plan five into it so that if you're going to plan the 24th as the first day. I mean, I'm not saying we change anything. If we, we just, maybe the communication committee can help to craft the wording, but for me, it's, it's one of the things that I hear from, from people in either social media or conversations, that they, they make an assumption, they don't look at those makeup days as really being part of the, the planning year. So, that, that's my only comment. Other than, other than that, I'm, based on the input and what I saw on the calendar, I don't have any questions.
Cindy?
I agree with Andy. I think the MU, if you're new to the district, you're not looking, you've never seen it before, you might wonder what MU is, because it's not described, there's not an asterisk. So, I think making a notation about it makes sense, that these are built in, you know, on, based on, you know, the snow days that occur, which we have no control over. But also, I think that sometimes it helps to have context. So, over the last five years, on an average, we use this many days. So, it helps parents kind of...
She answered six.
Yeah, or, you know, it helps put some context around, you know, these were how many of the MU days were used, you know, maybe even just a three-year look back, you know, or something that helps people understand that we generally use a chunk of them or all of them. And that makes it even more important that they understand that the last day is not June 14th, that it's most likely...
June 21st.
Yep.
So, and actually, if you'd indulge me, I won't go back to our last agenda item because my post-it note was tucked aside. I did get some email feedback, and I promised it to you, and then I didn't give it to you. So, there were three categories of feedback, so it was about, there were like four requests for additional, additional elements. One wanted us to plan our calendar five years at a time for planning for families. One wanted to, the school day extended to get out earlier. So, you know, obviously, looking toward the hours, as we've talked about at board meetings in the past. And three people wanted one vacation week versus two. So, instead of the February and April vacations, just to do one week in March, and three people came back with that. So, I apologize for not giving that to you in, in the survey results. So, I, I don't know who went first. Okay, Cindy?
Well, I'm wondering if next year, didn't we have that question last year about the one week, or I feel like that has...
It's...
Did we do it in the survey before?
Did we ever put it in the formal?
It was, no, it was really just an open response, and when Shannon and I were preparing for the meeting tonight, or maybe I just said it to my colleagues, it probably should be an asked question, yes or no, as compared to just an open response. But we've never had, what I would say over time is, we never had a critical mass of persons, of those persons responding, you know? We've had some, but it probably should be a question posed.
Yeah, I think we should put it on our survey for next year, just to put that out there, to get the pulse of our, of our community, including teachers. I don't know if there's any impact on the teacher contract for that as well.
Well, I would just say, given the fact that I meet with them all the time, they would not be in favor of that.
And what about the contract? Is it, are we contractually obligated? Is it, is it a moot point until we renegotiate?
Well, it says 180 days of instruction and seven additional days.
Okay. So, that, that would be our discretion, but I think if we do formulate that question, we have to formulate it with consequences framed around it, just like we do with the first day of school being after Labor Day, and talking about the teacher planning days. And that being, that if we do this, for anyone taking any tech ed courses through either Hudson or Nashville school districts, that would be on that two-week schedule, they would miss three weeks of instruction.
And I would just add some input, just to the comment about doing a schedule five years in advance, I would not be in favor of that. In this, for a variety of reasons, including it's hard to know what happens in the future, what trends might exist, as well as what contractual obligations might come about.
And decisions we'd make for future boards.
And a decision that we would make for future boards.
That would be my...
We typically don't go anything longer than three years.
Gotcha. So, do we, who have a hand? Michael, and then Andy?
You brought up the extending the school day by a certain amount of minutes. This is something that's been brought up numerous times when I speak to individuals. I'd like maybe some high-level discussion around that, or assessment of what, what the impact might be if we were to try to extend the school day, how that would impact the classes, the teaching, like, it's obviously not just as simple as adding 15 minutes to a day.
No. So, what I would first tell you, it's a change in working conditions, so it's something that the association would have to agree to. So, and it's something normally that one would do. I would say, like, in January, you'd plan it, because you have to explain it out, and then they would have to take a vote, but it's definitely a change in working conditions.
But what I, I guess what I would like is, I would like a general, probably, discussion around the impacts of the school day first, and then seeing if it's even a viable thing to bring forward beyond that. Because, I mean, it's not, not, I wouldn't say it's something to talk to a teachers' union or anything like that first. It would be more of a general discussion to see if it's viable, what the impact would be on a school day. And then, if it were something that we want to bring forward, obviously, it would take a, probably a three-year turnaround before it actually would be implemented, unless the, when, and might not even be... Go ahead, Andy.
Andy's chomping at the bit.
So, first of all, we actually went down this road about three years ago, I think. We actually brought Amherst in, who does their hourly, to get their observations of what it did. And then, we, as a board, actually talked about it, I don't know if it was at that meeting or a subsequent one. But one, a couple of times, yeah, it's, I don't recall, it was a couple, at least two years ago. One of the interesting things is, is that the impacts to the different schools, when you add the time per day, it impacts the different schools differently. And you, you do have to do a fair amount of planning to figure out how the elementary schools would handle the extra time versus how the, the high schools, and, and, the reason I actually had my hand raised is how you count teachable hours. Because in an elementary school, you can count almost all the time as teachable hours, but in high school, when you have studies and, and, and block schedule, and, and, you know, sort of home room time, that doesn't count. So, you count things differently in the different schools for teachable hours. So, it adds complexity. But, but it's definitely a conversation to have, because two agenda items down in our calendar, we're going to have an update on the tentative last day of school, where I'm assuming that the superintendent may talk about hours.
Sure.
She might, maybe, like she did last year, because we had extra snow days, and she was able to calculate hours to find out whether we had to go all the days, or whether we could bite a couple of them off. So, it begs the question, if for two years in a row, we're going to start doing about teachable hours, to understand whether we can whack days at the end of the calendar, does that mean that we, as a board and a district, should start looking seriously at this, at this process? So, it's a roundabout way of saying, we talked about it, we sort of let it slide, but now we're getting more evidence that maybe we, as a board, need to look at it more seriously.
And to clarify your point, ask the state to let us whack days.
Well, correct. But it boils down to teachable hours, which is part of the, the different calculations.
Right, absolutely.
Right.
So, on that note, we do have some housekeeping still to do on this calendar. So, if anyone so desires, I would entertain a motion to put the calendar forth. Michael?
I move that we approve the 2018-2019 school calendar as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Andy? Any comments to the... Cindy?
As presented or with a notation?
With the notation regarding the actual additional school, the school days based off of snow days and or cancellations, I should say.
Does he need to re...
Yes. He needs three seconds.
Go ahead. You've got it. You've got it, it was your idea.
It's hard for me to, it's hard for me to disagree if I started talking about it first.
Yeah, it's your idea, so you can't say no. There you go. So, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries, 5-0-0. So, Chris is already planning his first day of school now, for a senior year. Awesome. We're going on to item number six, which is the scheduling of the 2018 graduation date. Marge?
Thank you. So, you'd see in your packet a letter from Principal Johnson talking about graduation date for this year. It will be June 16th at 10:00 a.m. on Student Memorial Field. We have both conferred, and that is the proper date.
Cindy?
So, I've had a, a couple of parents reach out to me regarding the graduation process, picking the date, as we do. So, I wondered if you could take a minute and not only just walk through the process that we go through and why, you know, the assumption is that we have to have so many teachable days, and the seniors can have five fewer than the, the rest of the student bodies, and so on and so forth. But I think even regardless of that, and you can talk more about that, is, is there a way for us to set in advance, like, based on what we know? Like, for example, it always seems to be between two weekends. Is there a way that, and maybe we could just take a minute to talk through the consequences of that? So, let's say we set the date as a later date, you know, what, how does that impact the students, the staff, so on and so forth? Because what I'm hearing is some frustration that's out there by not being able to set the date until now, when you've got people traveling in from out of town, and so on and so forth. And that also begs the question of, what are other districts doing? You know, let's say the districts that book the Verizon or the SNU Arena well in advance. Is there something we can do that can give a little more visibility? We obviously have a constraint, we can't control the weather, we can't control those days, so we, the way that we've had it in the past has been dependent on those days. But is there anything that we can do to give a more concrete date for our families? And I'd like to just get some thoughts on that.
So, I would just say that they, we do have to have 175 days for seniors. And if we go back, you often raise up trends, or what have we done over the immediate past? I look back two or three years, and the second meeting in March is normally when we've given the date, because we are so weather-dependent. The minute we get into starting school after Labor Day, we just lose a tremendous amount of option. For our sister districts that start up in August, they just get, if you will, a head start on days, so they're not as much up against weather. For those that don't have graduation on their premises, but use the SNU Arena, or Stella Stadium, or whatever, they have to set a date. And at, at SNU, in fact, there'll be three graduations back-to-back. For example, Manchester, it will have its three high schools back-to-back. So, you will see them do all kinds of things to come up with that 175 days. For us, again, because we're all front-ended, notice, all our professional development is up front, again. So, there are absolutely no other days throughout the year to take. We've, we've expended them. And so, it really does come down to weather relation. And, and again, trying to see if we can schedule it either the first, second, or third, third Saturday. We used to schedule graduation on Friday night, too. We used to schedule graduation on Friday night, too, as a matter of fact. I can tell you that, too. I have all the, all the dates, all the, you know, so it, it just vacillates between those three Saturdays, and it really just comes down to capturing those hours.
So, I was gonna clarify what you just said. So because we do professional development before the first day of school, the school districts have one up, basically, because they have days under their belt. So that means they're not doing professional development.
They're doing professional development throughout the year. So in other words, for example, a makeup day, Conker just took a professional development day that it had in the quarter, and it turned it into a school day. So it will do its professional development, let's say, after school, or whatever, a couple of days, to gather a day. So when you have professional development spread throughout the year, like one a quarter, then those days can turn into school days if you need them. And we've done that once upon a time, too. When you put them all up front, when you put them in August, and, and, see, there's pro and con to everything. We think that has value, certainly for the staff. But when you do that, you don't have any other days to draw from, because they've all been, you, I'm talking about now professional development days.
But then they're, it's sacrificing the actual professional development that can be accomplished, correct?
Oh, sure. So there's this, there's this give and take, is what I'm saying. We had more latitude when it came to trying to make up days when we had them one a quarter, let's say.
So what would the repercussions be if we always picked a later date in June? You know, I just want to talk through it so that people that get some insight into kind of the methodology and, as well as what some of those repercussions could be. Let's say, regardless, knowing that the worst-case scenario is that, or generally, the most reasonable worst-case scenario would be that we would have graduation on this date, because we would probably have maybe the maximum number of snow days. What would the repercussions be if we just picked that as our date, and how would that affect the student body as well as the district families?
To be honest with you, I've always done it just on actuality, haven't, haven't gotten into what ifs, and really been somewhat controlled by the weather. But the goal would always be to see if we can have the seniors graduate earlier than later. Many of them want to start working, or what, you know, so we have, if I, if I did over the last seventeen years, I could show you the trend from Friday nights, Saturday mornings, and the fact that we probably have more, have had more mid-month than early in June. But I've literally been completely controlled by, by the weather, I would say.
So now let's take that a step further. What would the repercussions be if we scheduled it too soon? You would have students graduating before they were actually finished with school, which couldn't happen, really.
Or you'd have, or you'd have to postpone it. So you'd set the date, but then, as the superintendent said, based on weather, you'd set the date and get everybody in mind, thinking, that's my date, and then you'd have to cancel it and reschedule it. So for instance, this year, if there, or the year that we're talking about, that you just approved, if there, if we got out on the fourteenth and there were no snow days, presumably graduation could be as early as June eighth. So theoretically, you could say graduation day is June eighth, and people could plan. But to Andy's point, we almost, that almost never happens, and the last several years of averages would suggest that we've had at least four snow days in the last three or four years, and probably more. And this year, it's sixth, and we don't know what Tuesday, Wednesday's going to be. So the impact of that would be that it would have to be canceled and then rescheduled, which would be a potential huge disruption to families.
Understood. So I think, you know, if we were to do something like that, we would need to schedule a later date as the most reasonable situation, where it would be less likely to have to be moved, but I-
Except, I'm sorry, except that I would just say, in the off-chance, that what I just said wouldn't happen. So we would schedule it for the latest possible date, so that there would be no cancellation. And let's say that would happen in a year that we didn't have as much bad weather, in which case people might say, oh, my gosh, I wish that this could have been sooner. And the thing that's lost in all that is the wild card, which is that in, in the year prior, this is, you've approved a calendar for a long time from now, and there's just no way to know what possibly can happen. So I think sometimes folks forget, like, like in a year where there's good weather, people say, oh, well, why didn't we graduate sooner? Well, it's because a year before, when this was approved, we had no idea what the weather was actually going to look like, right?
Right. You know, I, I think that it's really one of those things that you're going to have some parents upset when we can't set the date. But if we set it and it was not timed properly, there would be people that would be upset. So maybe this is something we put on the survey to get some appetite, you know, from the senior, particularly the high school families.
I would just say, for those that have called into the office, and I very much appreciate calling in and asking the question, and my response was mid-March. So March nineteenth is pretty close to mid-March, that they would have an answer and figured, I mean, would people like more time? Yes, but it is three months almost to the date. So people were very reasonable when, when calling in to ask us.
So maybe back to that calendar, maybe we need to put something on the calendar when parents go to look for that graduation date, say, you know, right there, say when it's expected to be announced. That might help clear up some confusion as well, just a thought.
So, you know, the second, or the third Tuesday in March, we will announce graduation date, theoretically, saying it's not snowed out that day. Okay. So, are you all set, Cinda?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, that's all right. Michael?
So, so I, I think we, my question would be is that Sauhegan High School has their graduation date set for June first. Their last day of school for the high school is June thirteenth. Do they go through a procedural graduation without actually giving diplomas? And is that an option? So, even if we-
I have no idea. I'd, I'd have to talk to Peter Warburton. I don't know.
I, what I'm, yeah, I think that that might be a good one to look at and see how they do it. If they, if they keep their graduation date that day, then what is it? And also, what is the fallout there? Because I could really see a student, you know, walking through the ceremony and then not showing up for like the last five days of school. Is that something that I'm just thinking out of the blue, or is that something that they might have an issue with, and we would too? So that might be a good one to just see if, if there's an option there.
Okay. Andy?
So what they follow is what colleges do. When you go, at least when I went to college, when they had square wheels on top cars and things, the diploma was empty. You walked up, like diploma, and then what you would do is when it went through the registrar and everything else, then you would get your paperwork afterwards. Anybody that does a graduation that far in advance, when kids are still going to school, the same thing is true. So walking at graduation doesn't mean necessarily that you've graduated, it's just you're part of the ceremony. So to get to your point, why would a student not decide not to go to class after that? They haven't graduated yet. They haven't gotten the diploma. So, you know, they went through the ceremony, had a good time, flipped their hats in the air, but they still haven't graduated, and that's the carrot for them to keep going. So, but the problem is tradition, in mo, most high school's, at least in Merrimack, is you march with, and you get your diploma. That's been the precedent. So we would have to change the culture if we ever wanted to do that, something that's been established for even longer than I've been around.
And we would have to budget for all of those diplomas to get mailed.
Well, yeah, it's, but anyway, but that's what you do. You'd have to then follow afterwards.
Michael?
So, so what I would say is that if, if that's the case, I mean, I feel that if, if the parents are truly asking for us to possibly set it at an earlier date, which I, I think is a good thing to review, that we could possibly set it so that it's the day between the last, anticipated last day of school and the possible makeup days. So we, we don't do it the first weekend in June, so we might still be able to give many diplomas out, as it's kind of lined up that that's usually the weekend that you're able to do it. So, yeah, the, the seniors may have to wait a week after they're done school to actually get their diploma or walk or anything like that. But it's, it's setting a date further in advance with the option of, hey, you have to understand, if you still have a couple of days of school, we have to hand out. So it's something we can discuss a little bit further on, but we don't have to kill the horse tonight, so.
Andy, then Cinda? I would just say that we've heard from a few parents that want it to be scheduled far enough advanced for travel. I can pretty much guarantee that if you picked a date that was out and they could have graduated a week early, you'd get the same number, if not more, that would be upset that we picked a late date, and not taking into account potential weather. It's, so it's a balance that the board and the administration would have to make. What, do you, do you plan ahead and make one group unhappy if it doesn't? Or what do you do? I mean, and that gets to the point with the superintendent talking about three months advance notice should be sufficient, but I can understand where there may be cases where it might not be. But it's, it's darned if you do, darned if you don't, I think, is the scenario here.
Cinda?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, at this point, we're starting to kick a dead horse, but, I mean, I think it's not going to affect the graduation for this year, but I'd like us to revisit it, maybe in the summer, you know, when we're in some off-time before we, and kind of think about what that means for next year. I mean, I know we're approving the calendar as is, but that doesn't mean we couldn't update it if we pick a graduation date in the future. But I, I really think that it makes sense to look at all sides, to see if there's a, I know we've always done it this way, but that doesn't always mean that we always have to do it this way, and what those repercussions are. So I'd really like us to kind of explore it a little bit further and see if there's a way that we can set that date a bit earlier for future years.
So on that note, I think you've mentioned adding it to a parent's survey. I think it'd have to be its own. If we wanted to date it prior to the, the school calendar year, we can't wait till this time next year. So to that end, we don't want to wait two years to make a, you know, decision as a board. So with that, we should definitely consider, you know, and I know you're still the liaison to the Communications Committee, so I'm lobbing it back over the wall, but, but I definitely think that, that, that's a committee where we can get a lot of this groundwork, you know, what needs assessment we have. This is a perfect example of a discussion where Communications Committee can give us great data, and the same with those without internet access. Communication doesn't have to be via the internet. So this is another great opportunity for us to maybe come up with a project to communicate with those that have not provided us with an electronic email for access. So, you know, get more data from them as well. Thank you. Wow, we're really coming full circle on this tonight. So graduation date is scheduled, and we will see the seniors in all their glory, and the band and the chorus on June sixteenth. So those band parents have to know, too, by the way. So we're doing it for four years. So we're up to item number seven, which is the update on the tentative last day of school with Marge.
Thank you. So I want you to know that right now, the administration is very hopeful that the last day of school for this year will be on Friday, June twenty-second. However, thus far, we've used seven snow days, so we've gone beyond one of the makeup days that I had put on the calendar. We've used three delayed openings and two early release days. So when I said we're hopeful that we can call June twenty-second the last day, what the Department of Education expects that we'll do is that we'll go back and we'll do a calculation of instructional hours, just like we did last year. And we have to calculate it for elementary, middle, and high school. And each one has a little bit of a, of a different twist to it. So right now, that's exactly what Mark is doing with the administrators in, at each of the levels. What I will tell you that is, no waiver has been granted by the Department of Ed. So if you heard something on the news that a sister district had been granted a waiver, today we got a communique from the State Department to say, no waivers at all have been granted thus far. So it's a complete misnomer, and I think that's what got persons really into, so how come Merrimack's not doing what a sister district might have done? The expectation is that every district will go through and count instructional hours, and you will not have a waiver even looked at, a proposal, until you've done that and, and proven that you've done the calculation. Now, the danger with coming out, for example, tonight and telling you exactly where we sit, is I sat down at the table. I was speaking with Andy, and of course, he's showing me a map of snow for this week. And so that's the danger, because everyone hangs on, what is the last thing you said? And I've just learned over time, that's not a wise thing to do. What I'm telling you is, we would like to have the last day of school in Merrimack be June twenty-second. However, we've just got some calculation to do, and it would be much better thought for me to come back to you in April with the hope that we are through the snow season, and that I could come and tell you, as of this date, this is where we stand. And for example, we might have to have some elongated days for our kindergarten population. Do you remember last year how we had to have full days for kindergarten? Because the minute we do a delayed opening, we cancel, right, kindergarten in the morning. The minute we do a dismissal, an early dismissal, we cancel it for the PM. So we have to go back and definitely look at, at those learners and see what do we need to do for them. So as I speak, Mark, in tandem with our colleagues at all of the buildings, are doing calculation, a check and balance. And so my intention would be to come back to you either on the second of April or the sixteenth of April. If we think we've done all our calculations and we can show the state how close we are, but we're just not there, then I might come to you and say, I am asking you to direct me to send, you know, to the department for a waiver. But I will not do that until we are, you know, sure that we're close but haven't quite met it. I'm hopeful that we'll meet it, but at this point in time, we just have more calculation to do, and especially with the potential storm approaching.
If I could just also add to the superintendent's point, this year, our first no-school day was in October, and it had nothing to do with snow. And you recall several years ago, several years ago, the Mother's Day floods. And so, not to try to paint a chicken little picture, but when, when you do the instructional hours calculations, I mean, it's pretty precise, and it, and, and it's based upon, you know, at this point, it's based upon projections. So we are only calculating what we have experienced, but it is also possible that there will be some event that we cannot foresee that will have to then require us to reconfigure the instructional hours based upon the potential for a future event that as yet has not unfolded. So it's, it's, again, it's not to try to punt to, you know, be difficult, but it is a true statement that right now, we're really very tight. And that's not knowing what's going to happen this week, or what might happen further down. So just wanting the public to understand that this is all predicated from now until the end of the year on, you know, things working out weather-wise, and we know and knowingly that's an unpredictable thing.
Okay, have Michael and Cinda so far?
I appreciate your due diligence and obviously determining the best means to go forward. You just brought up a point that I, I obviously forgot since last year, but last year, you did extend the kindergarten due to the, the time that was needed. But I thought that one of the things that came out of it, that it was actually beneficial for the kindergartners to get ready for a full day of school the following year, and actually it was helpful. Is that something that you might do no matter what in regards to whether needed? But I've, I've heard up as a possible full-day kindergarten going into the next year, seeing that they'll be on the first grade.
I would say, even though it's very beneficial for the learners, I would say probably not if we don't have to, simply because of the extensions that we have to do with food service and busing and so on. But the good thing is, we have done it. We have an experience factor, and we know there were a lot of gains made. And we know that approximately, was it ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of our population took advantage of it, because you don't have to do it. But we welcomed the families to do it, and we have to offer it, but they don't have to take advantage of it. But most did, and it was great. So the nice thing is we have an experience factor to do it if we need to do it. I'm just saying, that's a population that we know we need to target because of taking time on either end of the day.
Okay, Cinda?
I just wanted to say, I totally get it. We don't have a crystal ball. We can't see into the future, and, and we have to meet those requirements. They're mandated by the state. I also wanted to say that we recognize that there's a- I also wanted to say that we recognize that there's a tremendous amount of work that goes by the district and all of administration to be able to look at those teachable days and then try to calculate the teachable hours. I'm sure it's very tedious and very detailed to get to that point where there's really no wiggle room. So I get what you're saying in that if something comes up, let's say a Mother's Day flood or something like that, we won't have that wiggle room like we might have before we do this exercise.
And that's really the reason why you don't want to ask for a waiver too soon. Let's say the instructional hours were close, but it just wasn't there, but it was reasonable. So if you're asking for a waiver in April, and then you come up against some hardship in May, I mean, that just looks ridiculous. And so that's why I say, it's really about trying to look at all the factors and say what makes the most sense. So right now, the most important thing for us to do is to weigh in on the instructional hours at the elementary, middle, and high school and just have it all sorted out and feel really good about it because we've done a check and balance.
Anything else about snow days? Andy?
So my only hope is that if we do have a snow day this week, and if anything else happens between now and April 2nd, we at least have a discussion because if it's this close already and we have one to two more snow days, we as a board may need to talk about other factors. I mean, and I'll be honest, what I heard in the different school districts doing stuff, there are several districts that made the hard decision to take a day out of April vacation to be able to make it up. I know we don't want to. I know all the negatives, the impacts, people going away. But if we get hit with multiple more additional days, we may be put in front of us a situation that we have to look at the hard answers. So I would hope that if we have multiple events between now and April 2nd, we have as a agenda topic to talk.
Excellent. That's why we wanted to bring it up tonight, because we had a couple storms and everything. The wounds are fresh, let's just say, the wounds are fresh. So on that note, yes. Want to keep the dialogue going, especially transparency for those at home as well. So we're on to item number eight, which is the board's response to the proposed voter information guide. We'll go through it. If there are any questions as to wordsmithing, then we can absolutely just go right to the superintendent via email if there's like a, if it doesn't change contextually what we're discussing. But if there's any contextual change that we want to go through with the voters' guide before it goes out, then we should do that tonight. So let's go article by article. And so Article One is the elected officials for school board, school district planning and building committee, and school district budget committee. Article Two was accepting gifts on behalf of the school district, and that is where it's on the ballot every year. If the article was not approved, all non-cash donations would have to come before the voters. And then any acceptance of property would still be discussed and evaluated at a formal school board meeting. Is there anything that we want to change with either of those articles as they're presented? Michael?
So I just had, since we're going to article, I just had some general stuff to start with in regards to it. One is, obviously, we have the three different locations that are, people have to vote at. I was wondering if we could actually add the link to the town website where you can actually define what your voting location is. Obviously, these links could be long, maybe use a Bitly link could actually help to shorten it within any of these. And actually, I was going to recommend that across most of the articles that have any documentation that's on the school website to actually be linked to also to help people to actually go to to get additional information.
Andy, were you talking QR codes as well for any of that? Are you getting a bunch of QR codes on here?
Right. I mean, we could do a QR code to point to those. I mean, it depends on how much you want to do to make it happen, but...
Yeah, this is, what we're doing is we're fighting space right now. This is a rather lengthy, and the QR codes take up a little bit of room.
A Bitly link would only be about 10 or 13 characters.
Right. You could do it the old-fashioned way.
Well, I would even say a Bitly link.
Yeah, right, right. That's what I mean, where you just have the...
B-I-T dot O-I slash whatever.
The little tiny URL or something.
I'll learn how to do a Bitly link.
Go to bitly.com.
I'll be happy to come.
I'll go to bitly.com.
I'll be happy to come over and show you how you can even customize it based off the article if you wanted to.
Wow. It's an impressive offer, I'll tell you.
Cost per hour, though, the district.
Yeah, so you're talking about the link to where's your poll, where do you go to vote? Because that's on the town website, so I...
Right, so I think it would be good to add it here. And then, like, the one, I know that there's a presentation for Article Seven that Andy did, and then any other, like, full-day kindergarten, stuff like that, so.
I like that idea.
Yep, sounds great. So now we have the theoretical overriding ideas. Let's talk, we'll go into the context. So thank you, I'm sorry I jumped too far ahead for you, but it's a great idea and I'm glad we're doing it. So Article Three, which is the Educational Support Staff Association Contract, were there any material changes you wanted to make to that? Seeing none. Article Four, special meeting if Mesa does not pass on, to discuss cost items only? Seeing none. Article Five, increase the balance of the district emergency repair fund. Any material changes to that presentation? Article Six, Thornton's Ferry Elementary Paving. Andy?
No, you caught me before the end. On the, on Article Five, because it is up to the amount that we've requested, up to 100, what is it? It's up to a certain amount, or 10%, right? At the bottom where you say tax impact, you might want to just add, say, up to 4 cents per thousand, just because it could be less if we don't have that much, but, sorry, small nit.
There's nothing to be sorry for, it's good feedback. So now we're on Article, oh, Michael, are we still on Article Five again?
Yeah, so, so that's an interesting one because the tax impact was from the prior year, technically, right? Because it's from the reserve fund.
Well, it's from the 1718 surplus.
Right, so the surplus up to...
We picked it up to amount.
Right.
And that's what the tax impact is, but it could be less if we have less surplus.
But what I'm thinking is that it's actually not affecting the actual tax rate because the tax rate is actually set based off the overall budget.
The funny thing is, the 1718 surplus is used as a revenue to set the next tax rate.
So it does, because you don't get it back.
So if there's 150,000 less surplus, it does kind of, it's one of those things that boards have struggled with.
The tax rates aren't even set based off of everything, but that's in the budget.
But people want to know bottom line if it's going to cost them more to do this, and this is a way to monetize it, so.
Yeah, it's less surplus that goes back to reduce taxes. So it does affect you in an indirect way.
The crystal ball. We can get you a nice ball in a couple of days. Goodness. So are we good with Article Five? Okay. Article Six, which is Thornton's Ferry Elementary School Paving. Any material changes to the presentation of that article? Seeing none. Article Seven, purchase of property, which, Andy?
My only comment is, at the bottom of the page, you have a line that says, this process will take place over the 1819 school year. I think you'd need to be specific and say, the planning process. And the, what you described, the intent is to explore options. The process of exploring options will take place during the 1819 school year. Just be very specific on what you mean is going to happen during the year. The planning process, yes. Just...
We're here.
Mark?
That was it.
So, just on Article Seven, the third paragraph is starting, it is the...
The third paragraph, starting, it is the intent. Second sentence, this will be done by publishing an RFP.
Oh, thank you. The superintendent's prolific red pen did not catch that one. She caught a lot of other ones, that's all I can say.
But I did check your math, and it's right this time.
That's very good. Thank you. I really appreciate that.
That was harsh. But the English professor has spoken.
RFP.
So are there any other material changes to Seven? Seeing none. We will go to Article Eight, Full-Day Kindergarten. Are there any material changes to the presentation of this article? Andy?
I just want to make sure that it's clear in here that the grant is a guaranteed minimum grant of $264,000. That we know that we're going to get a minimum of that amount of money based on the calculation of students, even if Keno takes, that's what we're going to get, right? So I mean, we just need to make sure, there's some question about how Keno plays into this money. So if there's a way, we could just say that the minimum that we'll get, and I don't know if, does Keno kick in in the first year? If it exceeds, it would reduce it even more?
We're only guaranteed in the first year 1,100.
Turn yourself off.
We're only guaranteed the first year 1,100, no matter what.
So the first year, there's no extra from Keno, it's the subsequent years.
Second year.
Okay, just, okay, fair enough, never mind.
That's when the Keno will really...
Yeah, I know, it's unclear exactly. I think, I remember reading it now, the first year, it's flat, and then years two and beyond, it then can be, but it never goes below.
It could go up to 1,500 per kid.
Right, maybe what you need to do is talk in an ongoing basis is that we're always guaranteed to get a guaranteed minimum out for students.
Yeah, I'll put that guaranteed minimum grant.
It's one of those ongoing things.
But that, we're guaranteeing, just like we guarantee future boards' decisions, it's guaranteed future legislatures.
That is true. State, they have changed the RSA before it changes, but you're right. I guess they could, but...
So, I would be leery, if you could just talk about the grant as it stands today, I think it'd be probably a safer bet. I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to make it look, yeah, exactly, I don't want to promise something we can't deliver on.
Or that could be...
Yeah, so, but still, a nice grant at 264,000. So Article Nine is the operating budget. Andy?
So one of the things that I've noticed over the years is that we always put what the tax impact is if you approve the budget. This year, like many past years, the default budget's higher. So would be good to say that if this, that if this passes, the rate is 15 cents per thousand or total of $30 on a house valued at $200,000. You might want to add another one that says, if this fails and it goes to default, the tax impacts is a higher amount. Because the bottom line is, if somebody decides they want to vote no down the line, voting no on this operating budget would make their taxes go higher. I think it's, it just adds clarity to it.
Okay. Are there any other material changes to the article about the budget? Seeing none, I think we have a voters' guide, so, thank you very much. Oh, but wait, there's more.
So on the last page, you have all the articles. Is the reason that we don't actually put the individuals that are running for office on this because of space or...
It's just, it's a space thing. Because you'd be putting down, right now, the way this is, it's on a larger sheet of paper, and I don't know, we may have to get creative with the length of it. But usually, when you see it in the mail, it folds over like this, and this is how you see it the long way. So that's usually on the back. And to try and stuff all the names in there, it just wouldn't fit.
Can we, can we look at possibly putting another link that says full on the site?
For more information, please visit us at...
No, no, actually give a direct link to this voters' guide with the actual, the individuals that are running also.
For a list of the full candidates.
For full list of candidates.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's beneficial.
Yeah, I need a bubble there, Mark.
Okay.
Hey, every once in a while, I get lucky.
I'm going to add a bubble to the yes.
Yeah, bubble to the yes.
But that was cosmetics, I didn't bring it up. But we're there. So with that, we have a voters' guide. Thank you. So we're on to meeting minutes, item number nine, which is the approval of the March 15th, March 5th, 2018 minutes. Is there a motion to accept? Made by Cindy, seconded by Michael. Are there any edits? March 5th, yep. Okay, go ahead, Cindy.
On page two, line 62, Board Member Gwalyumi, I'm just requesting that you change it instead of noted that the enrollments will most likely be spread across grade levels. I'd like it to state, Board Member Gwalyumi questioned whether the enrollments will most likely be spread, or questioned the impact of enrollments most likely being spread across many grade levels, therefore minimizing the staffing impacts, which was my point, I think, with that. And Ben? That's it.
I had actually one. Line 38, page one, Flatley is spelled wrong. It's F-A-L-A-T-L-E-Y. If I can just note how much fun you must have had doing these minutes, because you have Board Member Thompson and Director Thompson going back and forth throughout, and you did a great job. No relation. That we know of. So 23 and me may tell something different. So are there any other edits for that? Set of minutes, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. Abstain, one. I abstain because I did not attend. So the motion carries 401 with me abstaining. Onto the minutes of March 12th, 2018. Is there a motion to accept? Made by Andy, seconded by Cindy. Are there any edits to these minutes? Michael?
On page 10, in, on lines 418 to 420, I would like it pointed out that this information was given publicly by Mr. Beville, and I did not, so I just want it noted that I was referencing a point that, point of discussion earlier in the, in the meeting.
Are there any other edits? Seeing none. We'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Abstain, one. The motion carries 401 with Board Member Schoenfeld abstaining as she also could not make the meeting. We all took turns. Excellent. We are on to item number 10, which is other. Is there any correspondence to come before the board? Cindy, Michael, Chris. So I'll start with Chris.
The high school band is going to the Large Group Festival this Friday.
Excellent. Thank you, and good luck to the band. And it was, I think, was it Cindy and Michael? So Michael, then Cindy. Just work my way up.
I had multiple correspondence in regards to the last day of school and also the graduation date.
Excellent. Cindy?
I had similar correspondence as well regarding the last day of school and graduation date.
Andy?
Ditto.
I actually got an email from a parent that had a lot of questions about school district operations, so wanted to know about our budgets, our retirement system, our professional development programs. So spent about an hour on the phone and opened for more dialogue and offered more resources for her to look up as well. So sent her where to find the pertinent information on our website amongst other things.
I also forgot one. I did have a correspondence from a parent in regards to the incident at the high school on Friday.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Seeing none. Any new business to come before the board?
I have no comment.
Oh, sure, back it up.
As part of our meeting last Monday, one of the action items was to have a decision drafted with you working with Kathy Peel. I just wanted to know if that had been completed.
There is an initial draft, and we are going to be going over it with Kathy on a call.
Okay. And do we have an ETA of when we expect that to be? Or do we have a legal requirement within so many days?
I think we're still in good shape, so...
Okay, all right, thank you.
No problem. Is there any new business to come before the board then? Seeing none, because I always forget to look to the left on that one. Onto committee reports. Any committee reports to come before the board? Michael and Cindy?
I wanted to apologize, I was not able to make it to the professional development meeting due to the weather changes last week and missed the meeting, so, sorry.
Cindy?
I attended a safeguard meeting last Thursday. One of the items that we're working to prepare for is an event. It'll be on April 3rd, and it's similar to an event, a connections event like we did last year at the O'Leary Center. So the subject matter of that presentation will be Sarah Heimberg will be making her AOK presentation, which was a project she's been working on... will be making her AOK presentation, which was a project she's been working on for a couple of years to get, it's her Girl Scout, like a...
Gold star.
The gold star for the, for the Girl Star. Thank you, I was having a mental block. And then there will also be a discussion by the Mental Health Committee as well as many vendors that are there to help folks get resources that they need, they may need. Anything I missed, Mark, that you wanted to?
No, that's it. I would encourage as many people as listening to attend. There'll be a raffle of some fun items, and there will be a distribution of Sarah Heimberg's presentation, her AOK campaign on flash drives for people to take and distribute however they wish, for businesses in their waiting rooms to play it and so on. So we just really encourage the public to attend at the O'Leary Center starting at 6 o'clock on April 3rd.
Andy?
Mike, I just sort of passed a note here. Would it be appropriate for Sarah to come here the night before and sort of do her presentation and show the video, just so people that are watching this and can't go to this might have the ability to see it? That, as an agenda item for that meeting, potentially?
If, I just realized the dates, but I would say, my feedback to that, just initially, would be that if we did the meeting after, so that it didn't impact any attendance that would happen. Just basically maybe, yeah, a follow-up and...
That's fine, I just say it would be, because not everybody will be able to go to that or see the thing, but to do the context of safeguard and the role into it. So yeah, the one after that's fine, too.
So, but we definitely don't want to steal her thunder.
No, no, you're right.
So, there you go.
But I do have a committee report. Are you done?
Okay, Andy?
So this is actually sort of a monumental committee report. So on March 12th, the Suresk Board of Directors meeting, for the first time in like a bazillion years, their bylaws were, the Board of Directors voted to change the bylaws of Suresk. Attorney Peel was in attendance for Suresk. We went through several iterations of changing the bylaws. The bottom line is that it's restructuring under a different Board of Directors model. It's no longer going to be membership the way it is today, but rather, it's going to be a Board of Directors built from people from different walks of life, if you will, around education and things. There will be, it isn't really in place yet. The bylaws with the existing Board of Directors were voted on to change. We'll sort of be operating in this limbo state between now and in May when we'll have our, the annual meeting of Suresk, which is where nominations and elections for the go-forward Board of Directors under the new style will happen. So Suresk is committed to, at least into the next fiscal year, to continue to offer services to districts, but it's no longer member districts as to essentially anyone in the, and what they develop will be crafted by the Board of Directors and the members of the Suresk, the advisories. And it's really good to see them get back to their roots, but also not be tied to just a handful of districts. I mean, Merrimack's been a part of, one of the members, Cindy, how long?
From the beginning.
From the beginning, which is, right, 40 years or so. So for the first time in its existence, it will not be a membership-based board, but rather a service delivery board or organization. So it was a pretty significant change. The other thing I did is during it, because Suresk is still tied up with the bank and ownership of Brentwood, one of the things I did is I updated the Board of Directors on our deliberative session, and in particular, I sent to them the presentation that we did. Because one of the stipulations that we had to, to sort of go into that provisional purchase and sales agreement, that the board would promote the sale to the voters, to put our best foot forward to do it. So that was the evidence that we presented to them. So that was done as well. So they're sort of waiting for the results of our election to find out whether their obligation with the bank is resolved because of our purchase as part of this. So anyway, that was the rest, it was a sort of an eventful meeting.
Okay, any other committee reports? I was double-booked for the Healthcare Cost Containment Committee because I was running the executive board meeting for an HSBA at the same time, so I look forward to next month. So, and our board meeting is Wednesday, so I will give you a report on that for next meeting. Onto item number 313, which is public comments on agenda items. And the room is now empty, so we will close public comments. Take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to adjuring. Really, you're not chomping at the bit? Okay, made by Cindy and seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, none. The motion carries 500. Thank you and good night.